says excellent program and discussion on the national issues keep it up and now we come to the addition that featured Mr Bayor Onuga the presidential spokesperson the tattoo says Tino should stay in Nigeria and fix the challenges this is coming from Mr Toluokwe Akimimade we should prioritize the safety of a president that has not prioritize our safety and well be wow must it travel via the private jet or must it travel at all issue sit at home to fix the issues what has is traveling brought to the economy or the insecurity of the country have they done the analysis of those that are dying or committing suicide as a result of their economic and vital environment well those are very competitive questions and I'm sure that they do have some answers the next one is on my take on Bob Brisky and the commentator is innocent de Mudiya who says that that was apt thank you very much for this apt and sincere conscious driven submissions keep it up thank you the next is on the edition that feature Mr Shum only bid day of budget and Mr Khalid Amino that young protester that was detained for sixty six days he says it is enlightening and this is coming from Mr Joshua he says this is enlightening people should learn from this and then the next is on the addition that featured the minority leader of the House of Representatives Mr Kinsley Chinda and also had a roundtable conversation that had Baba Yousuf and Majid Dahuru this is what the guy said professional analysis is coming from Musa Adele boot says seriously this is the kind of discussion that should last two hours very intelligent discussions God bless the analyst it is a professional analysis devoid of any element of bias on Nigeria's major cancer which is regionalism and tribalism God bless Nigeria well thank you for that the next feedback is on my take titled breaking the chains of mediocrity the guy says and his name is Ephraim politicians are abysmal failure very good talk our politicians have posted abysmal failure what a country where the ugly talk down on the descent the next comment is on the one that featured Cardinal John Onoyeko that's the episode that featured the Cardinal the title is Labour Party's disappointing performance in the legislature and it's coming from Inegbehe he says Labour Party is the most disappointing party in Nigeria right now they are just there for themselves they never disagree with the APC I hope people in Labour Party in the National Assembly they are listening the next comment says voice of reason and this is coming from Mr Innocent Emma fully very brilliant interview and analysis thank you Cardinal John and thank you inside sources we say thank you to you back next we have Teotescun it's the voice of reason whenever he speaks that is speaking of the Cardinal thank you so much and finally this was sent to inside sources by viewer from Wisconsin United States he says suddenly competition wakes up the dead competition has its resuscitating effect it wakes up the giant even in a dwarf it jostles out hope out of the hopeless it says yes we are know has been a long drawn sing song of negative vibes long time ago Potacaw Refinery was dead with visible rigor matters but Potacaw Refinery was not buried and then Dangote Refinery was born and Dangote Refinery spilled out crude oil on a big hoop and buoyant scale and fuel filled tanks ride out of Dangote Refinery into the marketplace and suddenly grandmother Potacaw Refinery woke up from the dead Dangote Refinery woke up the dead who said competition cannot wake up the dead in Nigeria it just did and that came from Dr Folaudjo who says smackdown from Wisconsin thank you so much and inside sauces will be right back welcome back we are hoping inside sources today with a discussion on the state of the nation quite a few issues hopefully we get the time to get to them joining me here in the studio is Mr Majid Dahuru a TV analyst and newspaper columnist Mr Majid welcome back to inside sources
it's a pleasure to be here
okay and today we have an analyst who is joining us by Zoom from United Kingdom Mr Ayio Akife who is the chairman of the Central Association of Nigerians in the United Kingdom Mr Akife you are welcome to inside sauces
thank you very much
all right good so so let's start from Dahuru this refinery situation seems to be getting anxiety for several years the the NFPC refineries you know were were dead Dangote Refinery came up and now you know Potacaw Refinery is running at between sixty to seventy percent capacity what's your take on that
I think it's a good development and it will seem as though Dangote a refinery that's come on stream kind of spurred the NFPC to also reform their own refinery but you'll agree with me that it was a long process really it's a journalist yesterday when the post administration when the contract for the rehabilitation of the old Potacaw Refinery was awarded and thankfully the current administration also saw it through and made sure that it was seen to you know conclusion and by the grace of God for the first time in many years we saw products being rolled out from that facility products like um GPK diesel aviation fuel kerosene and of course petrol so I think it's a good development and we hope that the NFPC will be able to sustain this feat to also bring on stream the second Potacaw Refinery which has a larger capacity and also quickly devastate the war refinery and if possible to get on stream the Cardinal Refinery so with this I'm sure Nigeria will be self-sufficient to some extent in local refining capacity and be able to export as well so it's a good development
okay okay thank you thank you let's go to Ayio Akife let's get the the take of Nigeria's diaspora about what has happened in the oil and gas sector specifically the revival of the refinery the public refineries soon after the Dangote Refinery came on stream Ayio what was your take
well my view and I'm sure that of most diasporans is that eventually ultimately demand and supply fundamentals are gonna be what will work in this market you know what we've had in Nigeria is that a cabal have created artificial scarcity and that's heightened prices you know if you have twenty to thirty refineries functioning at full capacity it will force prices down so for me it's like you know ultimately what we need to do is have government policy that encourages investors to open refineries for instance we have thirty six states I don't see why each state should not have at least one refinery you know to supply to people that will force prices down so my view is you know I agree with what has been said earlier I agree with one you know competition forcing others to act and it's my sincere view that you know by twenty twenty five by the end of twenty twenty five there'll be so many operators in the markets you know prices will inevitably come tumbling down
okay thank you thank you Ayio and Dahuru for the openly comments so the other issue that I wanted us to treat and I'll start I'll take that to the studio from Dahuru is that so do we expect you know or is it imaginable to expect that what seems to be the competition now at least you know at some level not quite you know on equal level yet would that influence the pricing
no not very much and this brings us back to the issue of energy security actually when you talk about the affordability component I am an apostle of subsidies I believe that every nation must determine citizen affordability threshold for energy prices because energy is the oxygen of the economy what oxygen or air is to the living thing is what energy is to the economy and so I do not believe that the price of energy should at all times be determined by market forces and one of those do not believe that and so we need to take a second look at this issue now that we have local refining capacity coming up I think it will be easier to manage a price intervention mechanism
now that we have
it is measurable you know what you are paying for I know that importation and subsidies in importation of one product can be very tricky
yes
because of the more forced nature of importation itself but now that you have where foreigners working at home it is easy to intervene either from the production side or from the utilization side so I believe that whether we like it or not as a nation we must still come around the table to have a discussion on how do we intervene in the pricing mechanism so as to bring it below the affordability threshold of Nigerian citizens for a country of seventy thousand rams in one wage a month petrol price at over eighty hundred is way beyond affordability threshold and is affecting the economy it has impoverished Nigerians it has reduced productivity it has created serious economic crisis in fact in the UK you call it cost of living crisis in Nigeria I can assure you that what we're having is cost of existence crisis the government must take up this role because it's a fault it's a matter of national security energy security is a matter of national security so government has a responsibility to intervene in pricing contrary to what some neoliberal pundits may want to say so the only way price can calm down is when government intervenes otherwise we have to wait patiently until there is a fall in the price of crude oil
and the international market
international market and that will impact us negatively as well from one side
as well as our foreign earnings
foreign earnings so I think we have we need to have a conversation now about how do we not intervene in pricing so that Nigerians can have the benefit of being citizens of an oil producing country like other oil producing countries
so now let's go to the next issue and I'm going to start with Ayio on this one the president has done quite a bit of of traveling you know and of course there's already talk of shuttle diplomacy on Wednesday he went to Paris you know to honor a request an invitation from the president of France for a state visit now Ayio you are out there in the diaspora you are in the UK what do you think is the benefit that Nigeria is getting might get from this quote unquote shuttle diplomacy or do you think that is actually becoming wasteful Ayio
well I think the principle of it is good it's right to try and attract foreign investment foreign direct investment the unfortunate situation is that it's not working at the moment and I just you see figures don't lie we diasporans remit twenty five billion dollars a year into the Nigerian economy right no foreign investor even comes close you know you know somewhere something like someone like France we should have twenty five billion dollars in foreign direct investment for France twenty five billion dollars from the UK twenty five billion dollars from the US twenty five billion dollars from Canada that is what's the president the foreign minister the finance minister should be pursuing but we're not seeing all this so I would like to beg the question these foreign trips are they really really investment driven or are they just holidays you know I would like to see those on the president's entourage how many businessmen are there how many bankers are there how many economists are there you know if you were to go to somewhere like France for instance and look at some of the investors saying Peugeot automobile or Citro you know they would need Nigerians to sit down and tell them the benefits of coming to open a plant in Nigeria we should be able to tell them look we'll offer you a ten year tax holiday we will offer you highly skilled staff will obviously offer you security we will offer you you know twenty four hour electricity water good schools for your children all these things are packages like this put together before the president goes on his trips you know I would like to know because at the moment I don't think enough homework is going into these trips and they're not pushing hard enough and as we can see we just haven't attracted the foreign direct investment
thank you thank you Ayio Majid what do you think Ayio thinks that it's not looking like like a foreign investment
it looks more like
it looks more like an holiday what do you think
well the optics really sometimes may suggest that indeed it looks like our leader does like to our leaders just like to you know hop on the next available jet and just however I have a different opinion about the entire concept of foreign direct investments I think that any country that is willing to develop and grow his wealth of nation should actually be pursuing overseas investment that is what Nigeria should be doing now is looking towards countries of Africa maybe South America and any other countries in the category of less developing economies to also invest Nigerian entities in those countries
clearly
so that Nigeria will also become a foreign investor nation because foreign investment by its nature is more profitable to the country of origin than the country of destination foreign investment is predatory by nature and so if you look at the country of the West that have grown so much in wealth it because of their presence in the world market
the whole idea of colonialism
that's what it is so essentially Nigerians seem to be jumping at a where economic colonialism is being discussed under the guise of foreign direct investment so want to see Nigeria for instance explore economic opportunities in the oil and gas industry of South Sudan for the AA Ranos for the Dangotes for the Matrix Oil and other local entities we want to see the Nigerian government through the Ministry of Foreign Affairs Trade and Investment explore opportunities for telecoms for the global comms in say Ghana in say Togo and say Syria alone we want to see the hospitality industry in Nigeria get a foothold in the tourism sector of Zambia where our homegrown hospitality entities can have a space an investment space to benefit from the pounds the euro and the dollars that come into that country every year by polydemics this is a kind of thing that Nigeria should be doing now and the only time you would actually go after foreign investment will be to enhance your local capabilities for export competitiveness so for instance if you are passing an entity into Nigeria it is to manufacture goods and services that will be exported
yeah and then they are planned to be here in Nigeria
exported the partnership with Nigerian entities you export these entities or if you want to also help enhance the capacities of Nigerians to export this other you know less developed economies you can need foreign you know partnership in that regard that should be the case because every country must be outward looking you need to look beyond your borders to show up your sources of revenue not to build your wealth of nation that was the purpose behind colonialism itself before that it was mercantilism and now neoliberalism and new colonialism and of course so-called foreign direct investment so we also need to become an investor nation and we don't seem to be thinking about that our policymakers don't seem to be thinking about that at all
interesting
yes
interesting okay Ayio I mean I wanted you to respond and also try and expand on what you had said before that look Nigerians in diaspora actually you know do more than foreign direct investments you know so what do you have in mind
well what I remember is you look at other other countries India the Philippines Malaysia Indonesia in all of these countries the equivalent of NICOM the Nigerian disaster commission has put in place structures whereby diasporans can actually send money that goes into the national into the you know into the federation accounts and you know they put these instruments in place and this money is then invested in factories in job creation in infrastructure development it creates jobs it employs people and it boosts national wealth and income at the moment we are just sending money to family members paying school fees you know looking after relatives and the government's NICOM in particular needs to do a lot lot more they need to work with the central bank and come up with instruments that we can invest in okay just take power supply for instance why do we not have an investment vehicle via which diasporans can invest in power supply in each of our thirty six states that would resolve the problem of you know of epileptic power supply education is another area where we've got a big big problem one other area that is overlooked at the moment is healthcare and now a lot of diasporans I can tell you this as Kanuchem a lot of diasporans remain in the diaspora because of the lack of a viable healthcare delivery system in Nigeria if we sorted that out you'll be amazed at the number of middle aged and elderly diasporans who would return home so if I was a NICOM chair one of the things I'd be doing now is putting in place a healthcare investment program that maybe allows us to invest in at least one general hospital in each of our seven hundred and seventy four local government areas if you have that and then maybe have two or three specialist hospitals in each of the thirty six states it will resolve a lot of these issues and you'll see diasporans coming back home to invest and to create more jobs so we just need to think outside the box and there's a lot of potential a lot of opportunity out there but I just don't think we've got our thinking hats on right
okay all right good now let's move to the final point of conversation on this panel roundtable today it's about the budget and borrowing if you follow the news you will see that the I think the National Assembly has approved MTF and there has been a public hearing a joint public hearing of both houses on the issues of preparing for the budget hopefully the budget is going to be presented before the end of the year but one thing that has stuck out or two things number one is that it seems that the revenue generation has increased fairly significantly you know customs is making more money FRS is getting more Nigerians in the tax net and and all of that as a matter of fact there is even talk that we are getting close to one point eight million barrels per day or heading for two million barrels per day so people are just supposing that with the idea of you know still requiring a two billion dollar you know facility low facility to to close the gap in budget financing and so the question has come up and and the federal government agencies or spokespeople the minister the FRS chairman and rest of them have said look look I mean we still need that you know that foreign earning gap to finance the budget what's your take first Dahuru
this clearly dictates that even the best of times when you have a ramped up revenue from the usual sources taxes duties levies and even oil production Nigeria will still have to borrow to augment these earnings this is not even talking about the value of the earnings in Naira compared to dollar let us even leave that there's been an agreement that there's a general improvement in revenue and they've surprised their targets most of the MBS so there's something fundamental wrong with our economy fundamental and we have to have a rethink a rethinking of our political economy philosophy in this country is when a man does not do anything productive doesn't do doesn't work he doesn't do anything to earn money but he is living a substantial lifestyle so there are only two ways he can sustain that lifestyle either he steals or he extorts and if he cannot steal and extort then he borrows so that is the category that Nigeria belongs to you see the day we started talking about government having no business in business was the beginning of the problems of Nigeria so as we speak beyond ever generating entities like the FIRS the customs and
NFPC
NFPC you can't point to me one single entity that belongs to either the state government or any state government in Nigeria or the federal government that is an income generating business enterprise is almost absent whereas if you look at the economies of the Middle East the Gulf countries if you look at the economies of Europe with the exception of the UK which makes UK a strong economy amongst these European broader nations if you look at even the United States of America of course China you have state-owned
five hundred billion it's too small for two hundred million people our foreign direct investment is just it's just too tiny we've got we need an economy of at least two trillion dollars to live at ease you know we our annual budget is what twenty twenty five billion we need an annual budget of at least a trillion dollars to live at ease with ourselves and for me the way to do this is to attract foreign direct investment if you if we're getting something like you know three trillion dollars worth of foreign direct investment and maybe a trillion dollars of internal investment on top of that it would create jobs it would end all this insecurity crisis I mean in certain states of the country our young people have no option other than kidnapping because that is the only industry that is available to them there are no schools there are no vocational education there's no manufacturing so we need that's why we would like to help and we're having an event so Galadine on December the fourteenth and this is going to be one of the discussion topics we're going to have there how can the UK diaspora assist in the development of Nigeria it will be ideal if we had somebody from the Nigerian government to actually come and contribute and speak as well
okay all right thank you so much Mr Ayio Akife the chairman of the Central Association of Nigerians in the UK and right here in the studio Mr Majid Dahuru thank you for coming to Inside Sources
thank you very much
Inside Sources will be right back with a discussion with Colonel Bello Fadile you remember him that was the guy alongside people like then General Udu Shagobasonge who were facing the wrath of General Abacha before God saved their lives Inside Sources will be right back welcome back to Inside Sources today we have a special segment that is going to review a very interesting aspect of Nigeria's recent history we all know the story of how in nineteen ninety five a number of military officers serving military officers and retired officers such as then General Udu Shagobasonge and former General Sheu Musairi Adra were arrested for what was then considered to be a phantom coup my guest today is somebody that was in the middle of that story he was arrested he was a serving military officer and he has actually written a book recently that was launched in Abuja so I'd like to welcome to Inside Sources retired Colonel Bello Fadile
thank you very much I appreciate it Lawlu
you're welcome to Inside Sources
thank you sir
our program is about the future of the country but your story strikes me you know going through the book and attending the launch of your pro-democracy fervor even as a soldier of course you know you are also a lawyer so maybe that's where the connection is so I wanted to ask you you know as we open up this conversation that how was it being a military officer serving under a military government and yet you had such a pro-democracy streak that eventually got into trouble how was that
yeah I can call it like a breach the military decided to leave after the June twelve
yes
and then the international government was set in place under degree sixty three and it was agreed that we will meet the wife another election and get the civilian back the civilian that were elected were allowed to stay and then my friend decided to say no first of all even the civilian government were not disposed to Shonekon continuing as the head of state they wanted the June twelve which was not possible at that time because the election was not conclusive even though they claim Aviala won there are other procedures that will have gone ahead if we do that
formalize that
formalize it and then we say no you can't do that then suddenly the second in command or the deputy to to Shonekon organized
that was General Abacha
yes organize a resignation
and this was now August of nineteen ninety eight
unfortunately fortunately it was November eighteen
sorry November
the same day I launched my book so yes eighteen November that he made that broadcast now and then threw away the agreement what the military say look we have enough let's have this let's set this country straight on a democratic standing and then some say no you can't do this you try and brought in again which people rejected and won't allow General Babangida okay fine I'm leaving here is the template let's follow this after I logged the discussion we came to that conclusion that the best option now is national interreg government military you go home and stay but then he changed the template and that degree sixty three was supposed to implement and bring in a new civilian government so like minded in the military say no this can't happen and then from nowhere it's oh this is a IBB boys yeah can it be IBB boys the IBB is left it's no longer there then you say the IBB boy on a Saturday you announce their retirement Then you say the IBB boy, on a Saturday, you announce their retirement.
So, I mean, so this was now Abacha who had now taken over. He was the one that was saying that the people still making that request, that demand were IBB.
Yes.
And it was fine to people like such as yourself.
Well, I was, I was, I was, I was.
Perceived.
How do I, not well, I know, perception is a different thing. Yes, I was, but not openly. I was.
But you are still in, you were still in the military at this time?
I was still in the military, then I retired all my friends, I retired them on a Saturday, seventeen of them.
But you survived that.
I survived that and I survived it. I don't know how I survived it last.
Okay, so this.
Also set up police reform. Just to buy time, as far as I'm concerned. Then, when they submitted the report, it set up the White Paper Committee.
Okay.
And I was also a member. Now, it was when we were submitting the White Paper Committee reports to him.
Okay.
That I told him. Or he asked me, what are we, what are we hearing? Because the international community were not favoring, they're supposed to. They want, yeah, they want the military to go back to巴拉.
So you told him that?
Yes, we discussed that. He said, how, why can I say that when during Babangida time, there are more military personnel in his cabinet than he? So I said, Babangida's time is different. You are a different person, under a different circumstances, and the decree that Babangida settled. And made you the deputy with a clause that if. If the head of state resigns, you take over. Now, taking over does not mean you dispose of the decree. That is not what it means. It means you take over as the head of state and continue with the cabinet, but you turn it upside down. So that's why the international community are not happy with you. It's okay, what will I say? I can go around asking, ask the military men, officers and soldiers. Should we go back to巴拉 or continue like this? That's what I was doing. I told him that much.
But in your own estimation, why did Babangida leave Abacha behind, in your own estimation?
Certainly, you do ask me to answer that question, because I'm not General Babangida.
Okay, because, because, I mean, just like you said now, so the decree sixty three actually indicated that he would be the deputy.
If, if something happened to the head, which is normal.
Yeah.
Now, the circumstance of his resignation, we know is not normal.
Yeah, because eventually, you know, took advantage of that by forcing Shonekon to resign.
Yes, and then one other missing thing that a lot of people didn't know was, I was actually posted as ADC to Shonekon.
Oh, wow.
Which will have, which, I don't know, I don't know why. Because if I had been the ADC, it probably wouldn't have happened.
So why didn't you resume as ADC?
Why didn't I resume? Because the chief ambassador said I should wait.
Okay.
Yes, I should wait, wait, until he comes back from Malta. Where he went for, come over here.
Congratulations here at the WTO. And I'm pleased to be joined by the Chair of the General Council, Ambassador Peter Alberg. And of course, the Director General Ngozi Okonjo-Iwale was just being selected for a second term. So the Chair and the G C will say a few words at the top and will be happy to take your question. Without further ado, I'll hand over to the Chair, Peter.
Thank you, Ismaila. So I'm happy to. Say that the General Council of the World Trade Organization. Has reappointed Dr. Ngozi Okonjo-Iwale as Director General. For a second four-year term. The decision reflects widespread recognition of her exceptional leadership. And strategic vision for the future of the WTO. So as you are aware, the reappointment process was initiated on October eighth. No additional nominations were submitted by the November eighth deadline. Leaving Dr. Okonjo-Iwale as a sole candidate. I commend Dr. Ngozi Okonjo-Iwale for her outstanding leadership during her first term. Amid significant global economic challenges, she strengthened. The WTO's ability to support its members and set a forward-looking agenda for the organization. Her leadership was instrumental in securing meaningful outcomes. At the pivotal moments, including the twelfth and thirteenth ministerial conferences. M C twelve and M C thirteen, where major milestones were reached. So the decision to reappoint Dr. Okonjo-Iwale. Reflects the members' confidence in her leadership and her vision for the WTO. This successful process. Reinforces the organization's ability to address global challenges effectively. As members show that they are focused on delivering results and getting the job done at the time. When the world is grappling with major issues such as geopolitical tension, economic uncertainty, and climate challenges. It's fortunate that the WTO has a leader like Dr. Okonjo-Iwale. Who can help guide the organization. To achieve these critical objectives when leadership is most needed. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Peter. Didji?
Thank you, Ismaila. I think that the. General Council Chair has said it all. All I have to say is that I'm grateful to the membership for the election to a second term. We have a full agenda to deliver for the people of this world that we are here working for and for the planet. And we fully intend to get to work immediately, no stopping, to try and deliver on these results. I'm grateful for the honor of serving this organization, for the trust that the membership has put in me. It's quite a burden. But I relish it and we look forward to working on it. I'm also grateful to the staff of the organization, without whose dedication and hard work we won't be able to make it. So that is what I'd like to say. Thank you for that honor and let's get to work.
Thank you, Didji. Now we'll open it up to questions. Jamie, AP, please state your name and your organization, please.
Hello, thank you. It's Jamie from Associated Press. Nice to see you again. I don't know if you can hear me. Okay, I just wanted to ask you, as you know. President-elect Donald Trump has announced plans to. To impose tariffs on a number of countries once he takes office again. How concerned are you about that and whether or not that could pose problems for the WTO? Notably with the difficulties with the dispute settlement mechanism at the moment. And how concerned are you in general for the future of the WTO if he decides, like he has threatened in the past, to withdraw from the WTO?
Well, thank you very much for that question. Let me say that until we get specifics in terms of what is planned, I think it would be a bit premature. To try to pronounce on these issues. We look forward to working with the administration. We are grateful to the administration we worked with now. We are looking forward to working with the new administration. I think we should come into things with a very constructive. And creative approach to trying to deal with the issues that we face, the world trading system. Of course, we would like to make sure that we don't have a situation. In which we have any kind of trade disputes that, you know, that. Are detrimental to the functioning of the world trade system. So that, I think we can say, but beyond that, I think we should wait. And for actual policies, so far we have not seen that. And we are very much looking forward to working in a productive fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Emma Farge, Reuters.
Congratulations, Dr. Ngozi. It's a follow-up to Jamie's. There's been a new appointment at USTR. It's Jameson Greer. He is obviously not Robert Lighthizer, but he's seen as an ally of his. Lighthizer has previously said that you are China's ally in Geneva. I wanted to ask if you could respond to that, but more broadly, the question is, how do you intend to. Support developing countries and be their champion? And at the same time, avoid being subject to rebuke such as this? Thank you.
Well, first of all, let me just say that the appointment of Mr. Greer. We look forward to working with him. We would like to make sure we take a constructive and creative approach to trying to solve whatever issues. I, in responding to what you said, I'm an ally of everyone. WTO has a hundred and sixty-six members. And I hope they all believe I'm their allies. So that's what I can say to you. And that I will work with each and every member. I think you heard what members have said. I think there were seventy-five interventions today across a very broad spectrum, from developing to developed countries. And each and every one of them said that they've been working with me and they look forward to doing that. So I look forward to being there as an ally to every member. We need to get members to work with each other and to talk to each other. And I think we've been achieving that at the WTO. So we hope to continue to do that. And I look very much forward to working with Mr. Greer.
Thank you, Didji. Yes.
Hello, thanks for taking my question. It's Kismira Jefford from Geneva Solutions, and congratulations, Dr. Ngozi. Where do you see opportunities or wins for the WTO in the coming years? What are some of those that you outline to members? Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and hopefully at some point, maybe we can share my remarks. But I see a few things. I think that the opportunities facing us to help fulfill some of the purpose of this organization. I always start with that, you know, in the preamble to the Marrakech Agreement that created the WTO. It actually says that the purpose of the organization. Is to help enhance living standards. Please look it up. To help create jobs and to support sustainable development. And I started with that in my remarks yesterday, because to me, that's what made me excited to come here. It's all about serving people, and it was even a little bit ahead of its time in terms of support for sustainable development. This being said in nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five. You know, so with that. As a core, the issue is, I think there are a few opportunities out there. The first is supporting sustainable development supports developing countries, supports developed countries. Because we are talking about an agreement that we've reached at the WTO on fisheries subsidies. And additional disciplines we are negotiating in the next round. That will deliver the sustainability of our oceans and fisheries and phase out twenty-two billion dollars in harmful subsidies. And we are arguing that those subsidies could be creatively repurposed. As we look for additional monies to finance some other things like helping us to build up to a livable planet. So that's one area we can deliver for everybody. We are losing a lot of resources to illegal fishing, and this would stop all of that, and it would also replenish fisheries and our oceans. In other areas, agriculture, we talked about it yesterday, how to get a breakthrough. That would really help food security worldwide. One in four calories consumed is traded, meaning you cannot have, deal with. You cannot solve the problem of people going to bed hungry, seven hundred million of them without trade being involved. So we need a breakthrough in that. But beyond that. There are opportunities right now for the decentralization of supply chains to developing countries. And this is something I want to really focus on. We have a term which we describe as reglobalization. We foresee an opportunity to use this. What is happening now, you know, during the pandemic, we saw the vulnerabilities in concentration of some supply chains. Businesses are now saying we'd like to de-risk by decentralizing and de-concentrating our supply chains to build resilience. Well, this is an opportunity to decentralize and de-concentrate to developing countries. That never had the opportunity to receive these supply chains. So you can manufacture pharmaceuticals in many more countries instead of being concentration in ten countries in the world. Which is what we found with vaccines. Deconcentrate and decentralize. That's an opportunity to some developing countries. To create jobs, to add value, to increase their share of world trade. Critical minerals are now being found in many developing countries alongside clean energy. So if you are a developing country that has what we call a green comparative advantage. Meaning you can produce. Clean energy, you can harness it to. Manufacturing and processing of these critical minerals, because some countries have that at the same time. You kill two birds with one stone. You can help the world reap. Environmental gains, because you're going to be using clean energy to process these minerals, which are also being. To which value are being added to produce the things like EV batteries that are needed to drive the world. You build resilience, you create jobs in place, you create, you lower emissions at the same time. And this is a win-win-win-win. You re-globalize the world whilst also helping to reap environmental gains. So I just mentioned three supply chains now, pharmaceuticals. Green, hydrogen and clean, and renewables, and critical minerals. All of which are opportunities waiting for countries to harness from this. So we could, I could spend all day talking about reglobalization, because I think it's a huge opportunity for developing countries. Anyway, so long answer to your question, but that's where I see some of the opportunities to be seized for the future.
Thank you. Agnes, IFP?
Yes, sorry for my voice. Thank you. Congratulations, Dr. Ngozi. Concerning the next trade ministerial in Cameroon, I know it's still ahead of time, but time goes quickly. What would you like countries to deliver on? What are your main focuses? Thank you.
Well, of course, let me say that it will be up to members to decide what they want to focus on. So yesterday, in my statement, I made some suggestions. Which is that I think that we should, in Geneva, try to deal with the legacy issues. When I say that, I mean, let us try to conclude on those negotiations that have been pending for some time. And leave only one or two files. For the ministerial, so that ministers can really focus their attention. The dispute settlement system, if we've not completed, should be something that at M C fourteen, we should take. I'm not saying we should wait till we get there. I want us to do all the work beforehand. So that ministers can bless an outcome there. Agriculture definitely need to make a breakthrough there. Because we are talking food security, we are talking livelihoods in many developing countries. Those are certainly two I would like to see. Before that, we have a lot of work to clear up fisheries and. And investment facilitation for development. We have development issues, LDC graduation. We've got special and differential treatment discussions that are going on, on how to enhance that in some of our agreements. So I could go on and on, but I will also give you my remarks, so you can really see what the forward-looking agenda. And then, at M C fourteen, I would like to see us spend a bit more time on some of the, these new opportunities, these forward-looking issues. Can ministers have conversations about how we deal with. The new industrial policies, the issue of level playing field? How do we solve that? That is a problem that confronts us. Do we look at some of our existing agreements, like the subsidies and countervailing measures? Are they still fit for purpose? Can ministers discuss that and see the way forward? Do we look at environmental and issues on climate change? So there's a whole policy space for industrialization. There's an exciting agenda that we also want them to engage in at M C fourteen.
Thank you, Didji. I will now take questions online. I see Hannah Moniken. Hannah, you have the floor.
Thanks, Ismaila. Hello, Dr. Ngozi, and congratulations on your reappointment. I wanted to follow up on some of the questions being asked. You've obviously outlined a number of opportunities and priorities you see. But what are your priorities, especially on reform, which I know has been a priority for a lot of members? And where do you see the organization moving forward on some reform issues in your second term?
Thank you very much, Hannah. I think you're right, you know, absolutely on reforms, and there are two sets of issues. We have the reform by doing, members have termed it that, which members are doing to try and make the. WTO bodies and the committees work better. And actually, that's going on pretty well. And I think we should continue that work. Last time, we were able to take a body of changes to M C thirteen and ministers blessed. So we want to take the remaining work on this there. But beyond that, I think there are other important reforms. I just mentioned one. I just mentioned one. I'd like us to look at level playing field issues and see how we deal with those. And it may involve looking at agreements that were there before. I've mentioned that. I'd like us to look at our dispute settlement system. I've also talked about that. That's the reform that leaders and ministers constantly come back to and the biggest one. And work is ongoing. And I think we will, as we move along, the G C Chair, working together, hope to continue the momentum and get some results so that at M C 14, ministers can find something to conclude and bless. And, you know, so I think, just this is just examples. We should look at the way we function. We've been doing a lot at the Secretariat, but the overall WTO members could also review that. We need to be fit for 21st century. We need to show that we can make ourselves able to deliver for those things that matter for the world. That should make for an interesting conversation also and deliverable at the M C 14. Thank you.
Decisions by consensus.
Well, I think the G C Chair has spoken, so I think my appointment has been vetted.
You bet.
I, that's what I have to say. There is a government in place. They participated in the process. So I feel a little odd. So I feel I've been vetted. I think that I look very much forward to working with President Trump, with all the new people who will be appointed. I'm eager for it. Because I think that the U S, what I want to say is threefold. One, the WTO and its rules underpin 75% to 80% of global goods trade. And I don't think anyone has challenged that. I think there's a general recognition that the organization needs to be supported and to keep going because this is a hefty amount of world trade that is in question. So I'm sure that we would all agree on that. I think the second point is that WTO is much more than even that. On the trade front, we've got two agreements that underpin product safety and human safety. There's the technical barriers to trade agreement and the sanitary and phytosanitary agreement. I know this sounds very techie and not talked about. But the point is, here is a place where people, businesses can trade with confidence because they know that there's an, there are agreements governing the standards of the products that go all over the world and it rests here and the safety. So I think we would see eye to eye on that because I don't think there's any leader who would not want to have this safeguard. And it's a very important part of the WTO that is not often spoken about, but is vital. I know the U S, United States values it. This is the home of intellectual property agreement. I think 22% of new patent applications is by the U S. It's by far the most innovative nation in the world in that sense. And here we have the agreement that governs the protection of intellectual property for these patents. So I'm sure we would see eye to eye to that. So in summary, I think there are things at the WTO, there are attributes, where there are deliverables, there are agreements on which we know that the world agrees, these are vital to the purpose for which this organization was created. And we would certainly all agree on that. And I look forward to having these conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Didi. I think we'll have time for one more question before we close. I will give it to somebody in the room. Otherwise, I have Maya Plans online. Maya, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Ismaila, for taking my question. Congratulations, Dr. Ngozi. What are the challenges to accommodate the influence of the U S on the organization? And with so many trade disputes on the horizon, which suggests that the WTO is needed more than ever? How are the resources available sufficient for the increase in operational costs? And what is the role of the private sector in having, in financing the organization's outreach and external relations? And also, if you could comment on the A I governance division that will be created in the coming year? Thank you.
Ismaila took three or four questions in one, but thank you very much for the questions. Look, I think that one of the important things about the WTO is it's one of the few multilateral organizations where each member has an equal voice. Each member. So whether it's the voice of the United States or the voice of Mali or the voice of Samoa, they are all equal and we're quite proud of that. Is it easy to work or run an organization where everyone has an equal voice? The answer is no, but we hope that members will use their equal voices to be able to dialogue with each other. Of course, we see emerging trade disputes that are coming in and members are asking for consultations on these various disputes. But that's what's good at the WTO. We offer a forum and a venue where members can actually bring their differences and their disputes and be able to deal with them in a more cooperative manner. And we're seeing them using this system. So this is what we would encourage members. Whatever the case may be, whatever policy there is, we would want them to come to dialogue about it, you know, to not react immediately, but to use the tools and the fora provided by the WTO to talk to each other first and try to solve the problems rather than come up with another policy immediately. So yes, there'll be, there may be increasing disputes, but yes, we have the forum to handle them. And I think the U S is using this as well as any other member. So that's the way that I think, I hope things will continue in that direction. With respect to costs, I think that our last budget, the membership, we are very grateful because they were able to offer us the first increase in the budget in 12 years. And we have said we will work within that available budget. So operationally, there may be stresses, but I think we'll be okay. We'll be able to manage and juggle. With respect to private sector financing, we don't really have that. This is not something that at the WTO Secretariat that we, it's not one of our sources. So just to make clear that that's the case. And on A I governance, the new unit we have created is quite exciting. We're excited about it. We hope it will be up and running. I think we're about to conclude the recruitment of the head of the unit in the next week, couple of weeks. And you saw our report, Trading with Intelligence. We believe that A I has, will have a very important role to play. We trade in three ways, reducing trade costs, increasing the productivity of tradables and actually maybe changing the nature and creating new tradable goods and services as we go forward, just to cite three examples. So we are quite excited and that's why we have this unit to help us move with the process as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Didi. I think we are getting close to the end of our press briefing, so I'll give the chance, yes. I'll give the chance to the Chair to say a few words before we close.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll keep it short. I think you said excitement, Didi. It's in the, we're all excited today here at the WTO. We are so pleased that we came together the way we did and elected, re-elected you, reappointed you for another term. We feel that we now are really fit for the next four, whatever, four and a half years, your next term. It's a strong signal. It's based on the performance you did in the past and it's based on the visions you outlined so clearly for us yesterday for the years to come. So the, there is excitement today at the WTO. It's a good day for the WTO today. So we look forward to working together in the future.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Didi, and thank you colleagues for joining us. We look forward to seeing you at the next G C meeting in two weeks' time.